That brings us to the start of our meeting. Apologies, I have an apology from councillor McTavish and I'll move that apology be sustained. Seconded Mike Lord, all in favour? Thank you. Confirmation of the agenda, I don't have any changes, are there any other? Okay, so I'll move that the agenda be confirmed. Seconded councillor Bezette, all in favour? Carried. Declaration of interests, just to remind councillors of their need to stand aside if a conflict arises. That brings us to item four, Economic Development Strategy Projects Budget. Review of allocation process. Our director, John Christie, to speak first.
So just as noted in this report, this is a follow-up item as requested by the resolution of the 8th of September and proposes that the delegations stay as they currently are.
Councillor Wilson.
Just understanding, I think on the 8th of September 2014, you weren't here at that stage and I'm just wondering whether, so I can understand the allegations A, but whether that should now be the director? Or, it doesn't worry me, but I'm just wondering, I thought that was in, at the time because we didn't have a director.
Now would probably be the appropriate time if councillors wish to change their title.
Any other questions? Councillor Vandewoss.
Just to give it a bit more sort of context, is it possible to give some examples of allocations made so far that require these fairly considerable sums to be ticked off without council approval?
There's been a range of projects at various different levels councillor, some which have come to Economic Development Committee or council meetings for approval, so for example, the Sexy Summer Jobs was one that was above delegations that came here, others are within some of the projects, so Project China and Project Education Uplift have both been within delegations that have been signed off under various levels.
My understanding was that we actually saw all of those here at council, what I was hoping was for examples of allocations that needed to be dealt with quickly that haven't made it to council, that we haven't seen. Why we need this allocation ability?
There are some allocations, for example, a project, China, a person was sent through to a conference in Auckland last week, that was within, under 10,000 delegation and was signed off because it needed some immediacy around it and probably wasn't one that would need to come to council for approval, so within the project, some amounts are signed off under these current delegations.
Councillor Bezette.
I'll move the recommendation, Mr Chairman, I see no reason to change it, so I'm quite happy to move that.
I have one more question, so councillor Kelvin.
Just a, what I think's a quick question, do we know what the concern, whether the concern had an instance that prompted it, or where the concern came from that asked for the review?
It was simply a request of council for us to do a review to bring back to council to make sure the delegations were working efficiently and our recommendation is they are working efficiently and should stand.
But it says there had been a concern expressed that they may not be. Do you know what that, what that, so?
Oh, just, any concern would only purely be around timeliness councillor and that seems to be being addressed as we've worked through the projects.
Yes, so it was just a sort of, maybe there's a problem and the answer is not that you can see?
No problems, no.
There's no other questions? The resolutions have been moved by councillor Bezette, seconded by councillor Wiley, so debate councillors. There's no debate, I'll put the resolutions, all those in favour? Against?
Recorded please.
Carried. I'd like to take a very short recess, I need to speak with Christie about the next item, if that's permitted, so I'm suggesting that we have five minutes recess. Thank you. All in favour? Carried. Thank you councillors. We've just dealt with a little issue and we're ready to move on to our next agenda item, the Grodd and Eden Partnership Proposed Terms of Reference and to start that, I'll hand over to John Christie.
Thank you, just, this is in regards to the terms of reference that was requested from the 7th of September meeting, as per the resolution, we do have an amendment, a couple of small amendments on page 5.5 of your papers, under 3.0 membership, we're suggesting a change there that will read, the membership of the GDP Steering Group is constituted by council, that ends the sentence. We have another change in the next paragraph, the following entities are appointed by council, as opposed to as members, and under the bullet point, Naitahu nominee of local runaka or alternate. Just to make those terms of reference a little bit clearer. Sorry, do you want me to repeat those? Second one is on the second paragraph, the following entities are appointed by council. Of the Grodd and Eden partnership.
All right, questions councillors? Councillor Thompson.
Just while we're checking wording, can I just check on page 5.6 whether, how it reads is what it's intended to mean? A, under four, under governance, as it reads at the moment, it says that you'd only have to attend three meetings during any three-year period, as long as you apologise for all the other ones you didn't attend, I'm sure it's not meant to say that.
I think the adding of the word consecutive might be appropriate there.
Well, even so, it's, I don't wish to be anal, but I think what you actually mean is absent from three or more meetings during, when it could be consecutive you want. At the moment, it actually says the opposite, I think, of what you're trying to say.
So you would suggest that it fails to attend three consecutive meetings without an apology being accepted? So you're taking up the other words?
It may be that putting the consecutive in.
You're suggesting the wording is absent from three consecutive meetings?
Yeah, I think that putting the consecutive in may remove my problem, as it reads at the moment, it actually says that as long as you attend three in three years, you'll be just fine and dandy.
Yep, all right, so we'll just add consecutive. Councillor Bezette.
I don't want to be pedantic, but you know, there might be very good reasons why someone misses three meetings in a row through illness or something like that, you wouldn't want to say, well.
If they've put forward an apology and the apology has been accepted, then that's fine. Councillor Kelvin.
Could I thank whoever produced this, because it seems to me like a very...
You're thinking in the right direction.
Useful working document, just a couple of things, the first is, it's described in a discussion but not in a document, I think, it was agreed that the governance group for the development strategy, I think advisory is different from governance and I think that it is intended to be an advisory group, I'm wondering whether, whether its title should, should make it clear that it isn't a governance group? If it isn't intended to be, because it doesn't feel like it is.
It's intended to be a governance group, it governs the funding of projects and the projects themselves.
In that case, it's not an advisory group and it sa, it says it's an advisory group, doesn't it? Well, that's different from governing something. I'm just, it's advising us so as that we would then make decisions and it has a role in the, in spending up to X amount of money and things, but in general, it's an advisory group, not a governance group, I would have thought, but I, and I think those are separate roles and I think we need to know which it is.
It is actually both, it advises council, but then having got council's permission, it governs the expenditure and the projects from that point onwards, so it has a responsibility to ensure that where council has approved a funding line for a project, that that project is delivered.
In that case, could we have number one reworded, because that's not what it says it is?
If, if there was a 1.3 which said provides governance oversight of approved projects?
Approved by, whoever it's approved by, is it us or?
What is on the dollars involved?
Does, yeah, there could be projects that have no funding implications.
And where it has, the director of Enterprise Dunedin will report back to the GDP Steering Group on the advice that was considered and how officers and councillors acted on that advice, have I just missed it, or is there not an equivalent of that about how they will tell us about what, what the group's doing?
So what paragraph?
At the end of five, reporting. Do we just? The equivalent beginning of that about how it reports to us, does that want to capture some of the same sort of flavour of the end of that? You know, the beginning is how it reports to us, of that paragraph sort of thing and the end of it's how it's reported back, does it want any of the flavour?
Is that not covered by the GDP Steering Group will report on a quarterly basis to the council Economic Development Committee, that's the first, first sentence of five.
Yes, I just wonder whether it doesn't mirror the other, so it may just be that they're different roles in a reporting sense, but.
So do you have, I think it's okay, but if you want to suggest a change, then?
I guess the end of it says, there's a report back from John to the group about how we took the advice we were offered from this group. There isn't the equivalent of how we, how they took what we said back from this group to them, that's all, maybe, yeah, it may be that it's just a different side to the same thing. I don't, I don't mind if people think it covers it well enough, if you.
Are there any other? Councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, just a question in respect of one of the bullet points on 5.5 in paragraph three, the second one, is that one person?
That was, so that, we're referring here to Naitahu?
Yeah, well, it's just that you've got a contradiction because it talks about the runaka and there are more than one of those.
That, at this stage, it will read the nominee of the local runaka plus an alternative, so I'm hoping that that will enable the...
So runaka's plural?
So in this case, one will, one will carry the vote.
And, but there's an alternative.
One will be in attendance, can be in attendance.
Very diplomatic.
Any other suggestions? If not, with those suggestions taken into account, is someone prepared to move? Thank you councillor Bezette, seconded councillor Wiley, debate councillors? If not, I'll put it, all those in favour? Against? Carried. That brings us to our next agenda item, Regional Business Partners Network and again, our director, John Christie, is going to introduce the item.
So we're coming to the conclusion of a contract that we've had with New Zealand Trade and Enterprise and Callaghan Institute for a contract that's been held between the Chamber of Commerce and the Dunedin City Council's Economic Development Unit, that partnership, I'd just like to acknowledge the sound role that both have played in the development and the achievements to date. Interestingly, for all of us, since the economic development strategy's come into play, we're now in a position where there's significant trust being built between all of the economic development agencies to a point where they have submitted a joint bid for the next contract, so subject to successful negotiations on that contract, we will be having a Taiga Southland Employers Association, a Taiga Chamber of Commerce and Enterprise Dunedin jointly held programme for the region and as you've noted in that report, that will see us delivering a range of services across the region on behalf of business, so a very, very pleasing outcome.
Questions councillors? Councillor Vandewoss.
Under one, sorry, under the executive summary part two, it says that the regional business partners provided 130,000 revenue for the DCC, how does that compare to the 14 other regions?
The contract is set on an FTE rate which would be comparable to the rest of the country.
Sorry, full-time employees or what?
Full-time equivalent employees, so it's based on the number of business units throughout the region and the contract sets the rate for each of the employees that you get allocated for those particular roles within the region.
So it's the number of employees that you have?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, am I right in assuming that Clutha Development Incorporated is a council-controlled organisation of some sort in the Clutha district?
Yes, it is, it's, it has a service level agreement and is funded by council.
Right, so in the entire Ataga region that will be serviced by this arrangement, the only area that is serviced by this without any local, any support from local government is the Queenstown Lakes district?
The, no, so to clarify, the contract we currently hold involves us working with a number of partners, including the Clutha Development Corporation, under the new contract, we will have no contractual responsibilities throughout the region at this point in time, it has to be all delivered through the lead contractor being able to deliver across the full region.
Okay, and just on the range of things that have been, or the range of businesses that have been supported, engineering, IT, manufacturing, food and horticulture, so this is number 12 on 6.2, is that an exhaustive list?
No, there's been quite a range of businesses that have been worked with, both with capability assessments and training and on through the Callaghan Institute funding rounds, so a wide range across all sectors.
And is it limited by the expertise available through, whether it's through the business mentoring programme or otherwise, the kinds of businesses that can access the support? Or is it limited only by the initiative that those businesses have had in coming forward? So nobody would be turned away through lack of capacity?
No, no, there's no one gets turned away, it's fully accessible services to all businesses.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Kelvin.
Sounds like a really exciting thing to be extending and really good group of people and institutions involved, it seems perfect for us. Do we end up with, is it a jar into which the money that we get comes and out of which the costs of doing the project go? I mean, do we at the end of the day have, this is the amount we got from the government and this is how much it costs us to deliver the project anywhere?
So the way it will work in the new contract is we'll be paid for a certain amount of resource to be able to work with businesses, the better that resource is able to do their job, so that'll be across all three institutions, the better they do that, the more we'll be able to draw down on the rest of the government resources, so funds through Callaghan Institute, for example, or the training money that will be available for those businesses, so I guess the challenge is there for us to be able to maximise that by getting the employees that'll be working on this programme to engage as best they can with businesses to access that funding. So the, so you pay that amount, you have to hit certain KPIs, key performance indicators to ensure that you're, you're drawing down that FTE rate for good return for the government, but within that, we've got reasonable scope to work with businesses.
So would it be possible, either at intervals or at the end of the day, to be able to do a look back and say, this is the amount the government gave us, this is the amount of staff we used on that project?
Absolutely, yes.
And I'm not saying it has to even run at a profit, because it's got all sorts of other benefits as well too, but so as that it can be looked at as a jam jar at the end of the day, because that would be quite useful for us to reflect, especially if we're putting a bid in for the next round.
Yeah, look, I certainly think one of the best metrics for us will be in making sure that we're engaged with a number of businesses across the region and that we're able to access as much of the government's support funding as is available, particularly when it comes to Callaghan Institute funding, which we know, the better we engage with that particular programme, the better it is for our local businesses. Mr Taylor who spoke earlier, I'll be following him up because I think it's certainly something we can do to assist him, particularly around the research and development space, so, yeah.
Councillor Vandewoss.
In the attachment A on 6.7, referring to R&amp;D funding, it says that funding's been provided to a number of Dunedin businesses, can you give us a better idea of what kind of number?
I'd have to check the actual statistics, but there have been quite a number of grants that we have been able to put through into the Callaghan Institute in particular, have you got, do you want a specific?
Well, I was just wondering, is it three or four, or is it 20 or 30?
Oh, into Callaghan specifically?
Yeah, when it says, has provided a number of Dunedin businesses, I was just wondering what that number was.
So, sorry, which part, which paragraph?
Top of 6.7, first line.
Oh, yep.
Perhaps you could just email me later, just to make it clear, give us some idea.
Yes, they're all at different levels, I guess, we, these were just some examples of the types of businesses we'd worked with.
The ones that follow on are examples, I was just wondering out of a pool of how many?
Yeah, we can provide a full breakdown on, on all of those, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Wiley.
Thank you, on 6.4, next step, 35, point 35, are the operational details finalised?
We're still in final contract negotiations, so the only timing delay there is that there are a number of these contracts being worked up throughout the country and obviously NZTE and Callaghan Institute want that to be consistent, so we have recommended back a few minor changes from our perspective and they are working through with the other providers to make sure that they're going to get a standard contract across country.
If there are no other questions, I'm happy to move the resolution. Do I have a second, councillor Lord? Debate councillors? No debate, I'll put it, all those in favour? Against? Carried. Export education update, Sarah, would you like to come to the table? And John, do you want to?
Yeah, just by way of introduction while Sarah's coming to the table, I'd just like to acknowledge in particular the support we get from Education New Zealand for this and other programmes around this particular project, we've also had significant input from the University of Atago and Simon Chu in particular, you will have noted from his presentation earlier that he's particularly passionate about this particular programme and I'd also like to acknowledge the polytechnic, so this is a truly collaborative project where the main resource is actually being provided by other parties, it's been coordinated by Enterprise Dunedin, Sarah's had a significant involvement in it and I think shows an all of city approach to this particular aspect.
Thank you, yes, that's very true, collaboration does take innovation and innovation takes collaboration, so the Job Ready Programme is, as you know, part of the Project Export Education Uplift and it's all about how we better position Dunedin as New Zealand's first city for students in education within the broader story of study in New Zealand. So it's been a successful outcome of one of our projects, so as you know, Project Export Education Uplift has a number of different strategic themes that I've outlined to you and this is categorised under projects stay, so how do we enable international students to stay longer in New Zealand, as well as maybe better communicating with our business communities about the advantages of hiring international talent? So in this first phase, the Job Ready Programme was a six-week based seminar programme and we have funding to move forward into two more projects for next year to continue with it, so we're quite excited and we see it as a unique programme for Dunedin, as Simon Chu talked about, it's a pilot for Dunedin, it's the first one in the country and it's becoming a unique selling point and a unique point of difference for us, as we talk to international students and their influencers about studying in Dunedin.
Questions councillors? Councillor Lord.
It's not just about the report, but do you know, Sarah, have you got any estimates of how many students we're expecting for the next calendar year, 2016?
Not at this point, no, we currently have about 4,418 students in the city right now, but we have yet to see any outcomes for next year, but I can send you a link to a regional update from Education New Zealand that gives you a better idea of numbers.
Thank you. Mr Pete.
Thank you, Sarah, just, your reports and its attachments suggest a combination of marketing effort and some human resources effort that's required and in one area, you talk about the, about the eyesight coming into, could you, could you just elaborate on what, what you're thinking there and just whether that's involving an increase in the staff there?
It's not involving an increase in staff, it's actually better equipping the eyesight to talk about education, so it was one of kind of the unique innovations we've begun to think about, that came up from a Better By Design programme, so Better By Design was funded by Education New Zealand and delivered by New Zealand Trade and Enterprise and it was amazing way to better understand what our users were looking for and one of the things we began to discover with international students is the way that they look for information and one of those places might be through the eyesights across the country, so wouldn't it be amazing if, when tourists or students or influencers or other people walk into the eyesight, they can pick up information, not just about what you can do in Dunedin, but what you can study in Dunedin and that allows for new product development, growth in that area and leverage of resources within Enterprise Dunedin. So one of the tests that we did is I walked into the eyesight a few weeks ago and every single party in that group was an international student, so there were students from Massey University here on holiday, so it was during the holiday break period, there were other young students from China, there are parents walking in that have students that are international visitors, so it's just about a leverage, the type of profile we can have within a service delivery format and it's also to better enable the eyesight to speak about education and possibly pass on warm references to our institutions.
Just one more, if I may, just following up on that, are you, are you saying that information about Dunedin's educational prospects are available, that information's available at other eyesights, other?
No, no, we're the first one again, another Dunedin first.
Okay, but utilizing other eyesights, in the main centres, for example?
That's something we want to get down the track, it's something I'm discussing with Education New Zealand and their close relationship with Tourism New Zealand, as you know, Tourism New Zealand deliver eyesights, so it's something that we wanted eventually to take across the country, but we're starting first in Dunedin.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you and thanks, Sarah, for the report, a question about consistency of branding, I guess, at various stages in the paper, we talk about study Dunedin and Dunedin study, the Dunedin study obviously means something very different, particularly at the university with regards to their longitudinal work that they're doing there, so I wonder, just a question as to which of those two it is and if it is Dunedin study, is that potentially of concern from a clarity perspective?
Usually we use a term study Dunedin in the branding, if that was, that might have just been a different way of describing what it is a project's doing to... If that wasn't, that might have just been a different way of describing what it is a project's doing to promote Dunedin as a study option. But we do have cross-collaboration across, as you know, my project also has an advisory group that eventually reports back to the Groddo-Nedin partnership, and we are utilizing kind of the study Dunedin story within the wider brand of Dunedin.
Okay. I'm just looking at the brand mark that says Dunedin.
Okay, so the brand mark, the brand mark does say Dunedin study, but we refer to it as study Dunedin just for kind of ease of reference? Kind of internally, yeah. Does that help, or?
It does, I think. Or at least I know what you're doing.
Good.
And my second question, and I've been thinking all morning how to phrase this question and not sound like Winston Peters while I do it, but the Job Ready Programme looks amazing. And I just wonder how that compares to the kinds of services and programmes we offer domestic students, whether they are tertiary graduates or not, in terms of helping them into the local marketplace?
That's a good question, and it's something to think about. So I was looking at some stats before I came, and one of the most interesting stats I came across is 40% of New Zealand skilled migrants were originally international students. So it's actually a bigger effort that New Zealand is into to how do we, it's kind of like the global brain train, and this has just stopped Dunedin, the global brain train. We know that New Zealand needs key people across a range of skill shortages. If you go to the Immigration New Zealand website, you can read about the different type of skill shortages New Zealand has and how we want to attract and retain qualified people from those areas to help us with those jobs. You know, it's everything from IT to chefs to medical doctor to nursing. So international students are a core part of that skilled migrant influx. So in terms of what we provide for international students, the Job Ready Programme is just how they adapt to New Zealand workplaces and make Dunedin an attractive study destination. But I know that the university and the Polytechnic, and this is all I can really speak to, provided tremendous resources for both domestic and international students to make them more career-ready. So one of the things that I'm referencing in phase two is how do we integrate the Job Ready Programme to the Careers After Five Programme, which is available for all students. But we know that international students can be a bit of a unique breed, and they might need different explanations, a different type of approach, which is where Job Ready comes in. But I know that there are a number of programmes that our tertiary institutions provide in particular to better prepare students for their careers post-graduation, and it's something that is well-supported.
Thank you. One more, if I may. So if the focus on this is high skilled jobs or skilled jobs, is any consideration given to current particular shortages in particular areas?
No, because it's what international students are studying, so we'll take a cross-section. So it's more about how do we enable international students to be job-ready? And how do we better prepare our employers to see the advantages of hiring international talent?
Thank you.
Councillor Vandewes?
Just a brief one. I note that the authorizer is John Christie, and I'm wondering who actually wrote the report? There's quite a bit in it.
The report was written by Sarah.
So she should have been down as the author then? Thank you.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Sarah, having attended the graduation of the Job Ready students, can you go into a little bit of depth about where these students came from and some of their backgrounds?
So it was a variety of students. So part of the Job Ready Programme, there were two kind of different sections to it. There was the first section where we had a kind of a core group of around 18 international students, everywhere from Pakistan to Iran to India to China to Thailand, Malaysia. So a wide variety of international student cohorts from across both the university and the Polytechnic at various stages in their study. So some of them were undergraduate students, some of them are masters, and some of them are PhD.
And cross-section of ages and?
Cross-section of ages and abilities and work background, different aspirations for their futures. Because this is really about how do we enable those futures to be better met, but what Dunedin has to offer.
Do you think the local workforce understood the calibre of these graduates coming through?
I think there's more work to be done in that, and that's what phase two is really about, how do we better communicate with business? Because we've done some studies and there's a lot of research about how much international people can add diversity to workplaces, and they can advantage different businesses, especially those that are looking to internationalise. So wouldn't it be amazing if a business in Dunedin that wanted to sell clams into Thailand could hire the international student from Thailand that spoke both Thai and Chinese and did a degree in international business to help them grow into that market?
Looks like questions are over, councillors. Do I have someone prepared to move the resolution? Councillor Wiley, seconded. Councillor Hall? All in favour? Against? Carried. That brings us to notification of items for consideration by the Chair. Are there any items for me to consider? If not, we will take a short break.